Being called this meeting to order at 6:00.
Six o'clock.
I will do, we'll do the establishment of a forum. Mr. Flores.
Flores.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Salir.
President.
Ms. Williams.
Hi.
Mr. Aforum, welcome back, sir.
Thank you.
And, uh, Mr. Salina.
Uh.
Uh, Ms. Paul.
It's Adair.
Welcome in. It's Adair.
President.
Thank you. Uh, Jackie, do we have any acknowledgements?
Please, I would like to do one.
Okay.
Good.
Let me read these, I have to read these. This special meeting of the Judson Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. Was called to order at 6:00 P.M. I am pleased that you have taken time to join us this evening. As the Judson Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals and policies and oversee the management of the district. We are responsible for approving budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and to listen to reports from the superintendent. We are not here to make administrative or management decisions pertaining to the daily operation of the district. This is the responsibility of the superintendent. In compliance with the state government code on open meetings, tonight's agenda has been appropriately posted. This is a meeting in public, not a meeting of the public. As our guests, you are welcome to observe and listen. These proceedings are being video and audio recorded and will become part of Judson's permanent legal record. In order that the tape adequately reflects these proceedings, please silence your mobile phones and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that these proceeding, proceedings are recorded accurately, I may have to ask for order periodically should I notice that disruptions are interfering with our recording capability. Once again, we extend to each of you a sincere welcome. Thank you for your interest in the Judson ISD. You stand in the grounds, please. Ms. Williams.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and respected by the flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one city, under God, one with liberty.
Uh, Dr. Mackey, would you give us a little prayer, sir? We're voting for the budget.
Father, once again, we come to you and we ask you, please help and lead and guide us through this budget. We ask you to help and lead this God us budget. And please help us, Lord, get through all the things that we're doing to help educate kids. Please help our armed services, keep them out of harm's way. In Jesus' name we pray, and thank you very much.
Thank you. If there is no objections by the board, I would like to go ahead and do the discussion consideration of action items. I would like to do item B and item C to go ahead and get those out of the way, do the budget amendment, uh, for 2013, 2014, and then item C, consider and take action regarding approval of an inter-local agreement with Houston Independent School District to provide billing and claim services for the school health and related services program. Is that okay with the board?
Motion.
Motion by Mr.?
There is no motion.
Oh. Oh.
No, okay. People are getting personal, so I can't give you a long time.
Oh, I see. Uh, consider and take possible action regarding approval of budget amendments to the budget for 2013, 2014 fiscal year, which you will find in the budget, uh, that we were given. Motion. Motion by Mr. LaFoy, second by Ms. Williams.
Motion to amend.
Discussion.
Motion to amend.
Okay, motion to amend, 2013, 2014. Mr.? Yeah. Okay.
On page?
Yes, sir.
That's the one. No, this is the one.
No. We're working on B first. This is A.
This is, it says.
Okay, we're gonna, okay, I would draw my motion to amend.
We're gonna do this one first. You're right.
Right. The, the amendment.
Right.
The amended budget, right, what's that? Dr. Mackey.
We are just, we presented in the board book, uh, several amendments to our, to the budgets for the 13, 14 school year to close out the year. Um, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
This is page 18, 19, 20, right? That's the one we got?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on the amended budget?
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have any questions, but on page, um, 19, I would just like to note that the amendment gives us, um, a change in revenue of $3,274,063, and the change in expenditures was $2,173,728, which will allow us to end the 13, 14 with a net increase in revenue over expenditures of $1,135, and I think that's an excellent job, Mr. Elizondo.
I, I, wait, I want to clarify. That, those amounts were read, were only for this amendment, that's not for the entire year.
Right, right, right.
That, right, but it's only for this time. Okay, I'm just saying, I just want to verify.
Right now, looks good.
Are you voting this one? You have a good pick, huh? No? I still think the amendment we're voting on is a positive, and so, good job, Dr. Mackey, Mr. Elizondo. We'll see you next month or next month.
Uh, let the record reflect, Mr. Macias has joined us, ma'am. Okay, any, any other, yes, any other discussion on the amended budget as presented? This is the final amended budget for fiscal year 2013, 2014. Mr. Flores.
I don't have anything.
Okay, Mr. Salir, I just want to make sure, sir. Ms. Williams, I don't, I don't think I have anything on the amended. Mr. Macias.
Yes, sir.
Mr. LaFoy. You're okay, everything, sir?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay, Ms. Adair.
I recommend, thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you, ma'am. Now we'll vote on the, uh, final amended budget for, for, huh? Do we vote on this one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's an action item. Okay. Thank you, sir, for your guidance there. Okay, all those in favor of the amended budget for 2013, 2014 fiscal year, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Motion carries. Item C, consider and take action regarding approval of an inter-local agreement with Houston Independent School District to provide billing and claim services for the school health and related services. S-H-A-R-S, in parentheses, program.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Adair, second by Mr. LaFoy. Dr. Mackey, would you explain to, so before we start the discussion?
Okay, what we did is looked at the share, shards from comparison, and with Tasby and with the Houston, and we, we look at the revenue projection to double, uh, the cost for services has decreased 4.5 percent, uh, only requires one district manager to manage the program. Billing is a one ti- one time done directly into the well-based E shards billing system, and there's no upfront costs and no cost for training. Uh, they will provide training, uh, to our financial staff and remain on-site during the audit. So, it all looks good, and it seems like we're gonna come out doing very well with them.
Okay, sure. All right, is this the first year we've done that?
No, no, yeah, this is it. This is, this, we try, we haven't done it yet, we're trying to, we asking y'all to prove this.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see, but normally, I understand they are the experts on this.
Yes, that's correct.
With Houston ISD, we've done this in the past with Tasby, and we're gonna move it to Houston ISD.
This is our first time with Houston. But this is how we've been getting extra money every year.
Okay, okay, sir. Any discussion for Dr. Mackey, or any discussion on this item? No? No? Okay. We're okay, Ms. Adair, Mr. LaFoy, no discussion? Okay. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Motion carries. Okay, if we go to item A, consider and take possible action regarding approval of the proposed budget for 20, for the 2014, 2015 fiscal year. Motion by Mr. Salir. Second by Mr. Macias. Discussion.
Motion to amend.
Motion to amend. Okay. Go, uh, go ahead, ma'am. Uh, ma'am, can I?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Salir had requested that, he thought we were already there.
He made the motion.
Oh, okay, ma'am.
You have a motion to amend too, Mr. Salir? You can go first, it doesn't matter.
Motion to amend that we pull the $150,000 for the internal auditor. Can I get a second?
Thank you.
The reason I want to do this, we, we are, we're about 1.9 million. I actually have a bunch of motion amends, but we'll start with that. Uh, 1.9 million dollars, we gotta cut some stuff. Um, I think the focus of this budget by some of the board members is wrong, specifically, uh, I think we should've gave our employees 25 more dollars for their insurance, that it's 900,000, we can't do that, but I think that'd be the right thing to do, and I think we need to start looking at that early for next budget. Um, and I, we gotta whittle this down. I mean, 1.9 million out of the budget, uh, out of the fund balance, um, I think there's some waste in here, and I think there's some stuff that's, this money could be better spent.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Okay, we can, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. LaFoy.
Thank you. I'd like to say something about the microphones, and I'll get this, what I got to say. You people are not turning your microphones on. When I viewed these board meetings, I couldn't understand half of what was going on. So, remember to push your mic on. I agree with Mr. Salir on that, uh, there's a bunch of stuff we need to amend out of this, uh, budget, because we're way over. Last year we weren't over, the year before we weren't over, this is the worst budget in my 10 years on the board that I've seen. Now, we need to do something with it. I know probably some toes are gonna be stepped on, but, hey, we gotta do right by the people.
We can vote on that now, right? Okay? Uh, go ahead. We're voting on the motion to amend the proposed budget, is that correct? 20, 20, 20, 2014, 2015. Ms. Williams, no. Salina, no. It's four to three. Do we have another amendment? Ms. Adair, you had said you wanted to amend.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President. Um, Jackie, if you'll get your pen out, I'm gonna go through this. My amendment is all at once. I move to amend the budget to, first I will say the allows, and then I will say the not allows. I'm gonna start on page eight.
Page eight.
In our packet that you gave us on today.
Okay.
To, yes, sir.
If you all want, then there's two things that people want to agree with and don't agree with.
Well, I'm gonna try it all at once first. Uh, I'm gonna try all the allows first, and then maybe we can agree on that. Um, the CTE specialist allow, 62,000. The McKinney-Vento homeless.
Okay, hold on, ma'am. When you say allow.
To approve that position.
Oh, allow that it's gonna stay there?
Yes, sir, that we approve that position.
Okay.
So, we have the CTE specialists, 62,000, the McKinney-Vento homeless liaison, 62,000. Turning to page nine.
Okay.
The stipend increase for adapted physical education teachers, 3,500. The parent liaison special ed, 3,600. Down under child nutrition, the equipment repairman assistant, 33,000.
Excuse me, is it, is it there?
Yes, sir.
You're looking to take these out?
No, I'm allowing these.
Well, why are you voting that one? I mean, they're in here already, and the motion, and the motion is to, you're gonna change it, or?
I am.
Put it in the budget.
I am, I am gonna move to change it. If you let me, let me complete, I want a clear record. The fourth grade teacher crest view for 55,000 on page 10.
Page 10?
Yes, sir. The cafeteria manager and the general worker, 28,000, and 60,000.
Which one?
Under, uh, Copperfield at the bottom.
Okay.
And under the federal programs grants on page 11, the STEM grant coordinator stipend of 6,000. I move to allow those on, on the, um, request for additions. And also, we also have, well, we just voted to leave the internal auditor position at 125 plus the 25 that's in the budget for the program, and to disallow, um, all others. But I also, I'm sorry, I missed something on the back page. The classroom size reduction teacher, the 342,000, to allow that, and to allow the three receptionists, except I did not get the exact figure from Mr. Elizondo. What was that figure?
Yeah.
Do I need to wait for it?
It's up to you, it's not gonna be very much different than that number, I wouldn't think, with benefits, so it's up to you.
It's not gonna be that much different?
I don't think so.
Okay, then, um, 72,000 that's allocated for the receptionists. Um, and I'm, and further, the further, further portion of this motion, Mr. Flores, is to disallow all other additions and days for all other positions listed on those four pages.
For clarity, June, can you read what you want removed, too, just so I understand?
Yes, ma'am, not a problem. Going back to page eight. Not allowing the dyslexia specialist increase in days of 216 for 5,300.
Remove it.
On page eight.
Oh, that would be a negative.
Not allow, not allow the additional days for the, um, district coordinator of school improvement for 4,200 dollars. Not allow the increase in days for the secretary of guidance and counseling, um, for 226 for 1,500. Not allow the change in position level from five to six.
Where's that at?
On page nine, at the top, for 1,400. Not allow all of the special education additions, with the exception of the two that I mentioned that are paid for out of federal money. The stipend and the parent liaison.
Okay, I got that.
Do I need to read each one of those? Y'all follow me?
Just, I, I think if you just mentioned it, ma'am.
Okay, speech pathologist, two, 128,000. Speech pathologist assistant, three, 174,000. Supervising LSSP, 5,600. Licensed specialist in school psychology, one, 71,000. Three licensed specialists in school psychology part-time, 108,000. Special ed coordinator, one, 76,000. Three special education instructional assistants, 75,000. Two.
75, yeah.
Yeah, I already read the 76, and then I read the 75. That's okay. Um, the change in the behavior specialist position of two for 19, 300. The director of risk management for 80,000. The secretary, um, increase in the police department from CT six to seven, 3,500. The clerk increase in days, one 85 to two 13 for 3,000. The desktop service technician, 38,000. The business systems analyst, 64,000. Um, leaving all of Copperfield in, that was not a not allow. All of the STEM academy, leaving it in, that was not a not allow. Leaving.
Okay, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Leaving all of Copperfield.
Okay.
Leaving all of the JSTEM academy.
Okay.
Keeping that, keeping the classroom size reduction.
Okay.
But not allowing the additional teacher at JECCA for House Bill 5, and I'll give a rationale and discussion. Um, allowing the three receptionists, allowing the stipends for the soccer and the special ed department, but not allowing the lead coordinator, BIL, ELL stipend. Did I get a second, so I can go to discussion? Thank you. Mr. President and members of the board, um, we know that we add positions, stipends, increase days, um, throughout the year, we're not limited. However, we are at a crux point of our budget, and the budget right now reflects almost $2 million in excess. And once we, um, approve these positions, this is the majority of our budget. Um, in the special ed department, I think we need to look at the special ed department in a work session with a program review of what we have and what we're adding, what positions are filled, what are not filled, how much the special ed budget is, not just from what we get, but also from what, um, comes out of our, our district budget. The other positions, um, I, I believe that, you know, there are some needs, I just don't, I think we've run out of time, and I think we need to scrub personnel, not just the new positions, but also looking at what we have, and we don't have time. I thank Mr. Flores and Mr. Salir for coming in early, and, um, speaking to Dr. Mackey, so we'd be able to get through this as expeditiously as possible. I want my community to know this is not a permanent denial, this is a request that the board not approve this tonight until we can consider how to come up with an additional 1,900, et cetera dollars. And that's the reason for my motion, and I know it's pretty radical, um, I've never done it before, but if, you know, we're allowed more time to work on these specific items, then we can vote to approve it. This is not a permanent, you can never have this. I think the increase in days on some of these people, um, some of these positions, but I don't think we have enough time, and I just feel it would not be responsible for me to go ahead and approve those that are funded, that are not mandatory, which are Copperfield, our STEM, our teacher for crest view, those we need, and we need to fill those right away. I do want to mention on the J, on the JECCA side, um, I asked the question on HB5, does the college have a web designer? Is this a position that we can send our students to Alamo College Districts and utilize their professor? And, um, Dr. Mackey said he would get back with me, so if, when I get that answer, then we can bring that JECCA position back, unless there's some information you have right now, Dr. Mackey, on whether or not Alamo College has it. You'll bring it back? Okay. Um, I, I relinquish the floor, Mr. President.
Did you have something? Oh, okay. Mr. Salir.
Yes. I think this amendment's totally irresponsible, Ms. Adair. It gut special ed. And as for, we don't have time, we've been working on this budget since February, so if you haven't had time to bring it up before now, I think it's irresponsible. I really do. You know, you look, speech pathology, we've had trouble with this, we're trying to fix it, we've been spending a ton of money on consultants for speech pathology and, uh, physical therapy, psychology, and it's costing this mon, this district money, because we don't employ these people ourselves. So by not doing this, it's actually gonna cost us more money. If I was a special ed parent, I would be firing this board up tomorrow morning with emails. Um, you know, th- this is, this is just not the way you amend the budget on the last day. If you had concern, you should've brought it up before. I will not support this in any size, shape, or form. This is just not the way you do business on the last day. Thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Jeff, can I respond to Mr. Salir's question?
Oh, okay.
Uh, Mr. Salir, I would, Mr. Salir, I would, um, tell you that we did not gut special ed. We have the same staff that we have, we have the same amount of people that we had, that we went through this school year, um, and so, um, no, sir, we are not gutting any position, we're just not adding.
We're trying to follow that.
Absolutely.
It's okay, we're spending more money on speech pathology and sisters, uh, not passing this, we're trying to make this a big cost. We spend a ton of money every year because we have to contract these people, because we're caught many times during the budget process, and this is a attempt to fix this and make it a big cost. So, I, I just think this is wrong.
But, Mr. Salir, I would agree with you, except the money is still in the budget, um, to hire as needed, as we have done throughout the years. We have vacancies, and we have vacancies on the list of positions in LSSPs that are currently not filled, that have not been filled. Even, we have a vacancy in accounting. I did not remove the accounting position that's not filled.
Ms. Adair, you don't remove anything, the board removes things and adds things.
My motion, Mr. Salir, did not remove or gut any department.
Well, I disagree with that.
Well, that's fine, I just want it clear for the record.
Well, I want to clear for the record, this is the wrong way to do this on the last night of the budget meeting. This is not how you do business.
Thank you, Mr. Salir.
Thank you. Um, a couple of things, but I guess the first, I would like to respond to that in terms of gutting special ed, and I agree completely with, with Ms. Adair, that, uh, if we're gutting a department, we're taking away from it, and we're not taking away, we're not adding to it. And I, I have serious concerns as well, and I know that I've talked about that throughout, um, throughout some of the budget, and mentioned the LSSP concerns, and coming from the medical profession, I also understand how hard and difficult it is to employ them and to maintain, so I do understand and agree that we need to do something, but I still don't feel that this is the immediate answer, I think we need more information. That being said, on that, though, looking at, you know, June's, um, amendment, you know, in general, I support it. I think that, right now, I really struggle with the fact that this year we're receiving $9 million more, and we are in a 1.8 million dollar deficit with our budget. I agree with Richard, this is the worst I've seen a budget at this point as well. I'm not opposed to taking 1. something, 1.8 out of fund balance, but this is a reoccurring thing. We can't be taking, this is like paying your electric bill out of your savings account, and you can't afford to do that. These amounts that were over budget are repetitive, we're gonna have the same problem year after year if we don't address it now, so now is the time to do it. If we approve all of these as they are put in our books, then we are on the hook for them, and they're gonna fill these positions and hire people, and we can't change it. I agree as, and I support June in this, as long as this is to reevaluate some of this and move forward from there, and we may indeed need some of these, or some of the days put back in, but right now, I'm not willing to support it, because we don't have, um, we're in such a difficult position, and if we approve it tonight, then it's permanent, and we can't undo it.
But we can support an internal auditor for 150,000, which is, we don't need now.
Well, that's.
We don't have it, we don't need it, but you can support 150,000 for an internal auditor. So your, 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 your logic is illogical.
Well, that's.
You know, you're saying, we don't have this, we don't need it. Putting an internal auditor in a budget is repetitive every year, but now you're saying that that's okay for that, but not for this. Your logic is wrong.
Well, Steve, I, I have the floor, and I, I think that it's very logical and very needed to have an internal audit, and, you know, well, I mean, yeah, but that's the thing, is you can say that you think it's illogical to have an internal auditor, but that's your opinion, and each of us up here, there's seven of us, we each have our own opinions. I believe that that's a very important part of the budget, just as there's parts that we're gonna agree on and we're gonna disagree on, but if there's a board majority, then that's, that's what we're, you know, we have to go for. And, um, you brought that up, and there was one question I did have on that. I noticed that if you go to page 11, um, under school board, there is the internal auditor, and it's on the line I am is 125. I know we discussed 150, and I do see, yeah, I see that it's in the budget further, I'm not sure if, if the board wants to go a couple more pages. It's under 726, um, which is, falls under Dr. Mackey, and I, from my understanding of this, that 25,000 in terms of actual budget would fall under the school board, so I was curious about that, and I wanted the board's opinion on that, since you brought up the internal audit, but I do think it's important, but that was my suggestion, is that we move that 25,000 out of Dr. Mackey's, um, designated area here and into the board of trustees, which is 726 to 702. But that is all for now, thank you.
Mr. Macias.
I, um, realize that we have a deficit here of 1.9 million going into this final day. Um, Mr. Salir, I know you missed a couple of meetings, but.
I realize that we have a deficit here of 1.9 million going into this final day. Mr. Salya, I know you missed a couple of meetings, but if you would have attended yesterday, Monday's meeting, Dr. Mackey did actually state that we are overstaffed in special ed and that he had some concerns about that and looked possibly at even reducing special ed department. So to really reinforce what June has put out there, we need to evaluate that. So that is definitely going to be a continuing conversation. I, so I wish you would have been here to hear that, because that might alleviate some of your concerns. So, secondly, the internal auditor department actually is one of those things that a district that's our size and growing is going to need. There's just no doubt in my mind that it's going to make our district stronger. So by supporting that, that's going to be helpful for this district. I'll tell you this, though. In addition to bringing that internal auditor department, they will actually help do some of the analysis that we'll need to look at things like special ed, like HR, our finances. So really, that's going to be an enormous benefit to us. On the surface, I am concerned that we didn't get a little more guidance from administration on what to cut before we saw this. I do recall when Dr. Mackey mentioned that the, we were overstaffed in special ed, I thought he understood to remove the LSSPs from this budget before we saw that draft today, but I still noticed they're still in there. So I assumed that he just wanted the board to take action on that. So based on that, this is something I think I could definitely support with the caveat that we are going to address areas of deficiencies, and special ed would be one that we would want to pull back and take a stronger look at. At that same meeting that you missed, Mr. Salya, I did make a point that retention and attrition rates are extremely important for this district, and that by no means should this be the end of the budgetary discussion about what we need to bring or what we need to do as a district. So I'm also going to ask that we look forward to having work sessions continuously before next budget cycle, so that we have a clear plan of action for dealing with our issues with retention and attrition. That's all I have.
Mr. LaFoy.
I've heard a bunch of malarkey in my life, but this is the best. We're going to take this stuff out to keep an internal auditor, which is nothing but a witch hunt, in the budget. You look how they vote goes, and you, my questions will be answered.
I just want to make note for the record that I did talk to Dr., I did call Dr. Mackey this morning, I spoke to him this afternoon, and I spoke to Dr. Mackey and Mr. Lozano. So Dr. Mackey was notified prior to this meeting of what my recommendations would be concerning this budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. LaFoy, it's not just see how they vote. It's about 1.9 million, sir. At any time that Dr. Mackey comes back to the board and states that he needs extra personnel or extra days, the budget can always be amended. I don't have a problem with that. As far as the internal auditor, I'm going to tell you right now, I have nothing to hide. If the internal auditor finds something, then we'll work with that. If they don't find anything, well, great, that means better for the district. We did have a $75,000 set aside last year, which, we never used it, but it's going back to the general fund. So in reality, yes, it's 75,000 from last year and 75,000 for this year. So definitely, I think, I don't see anything wrong. Dr. Mackey and Mr. Macias went and visited Northeast. They got a lot of good information that they presented to the board concerning internal auditors. I think they have four over there. Well, we don't need four. I think we can just start with the internal auditor and see what, what we can find out. Thank you.
That's all wonderful and good in your mind, but in the mind of the people out there, I'd like to know what they thought. The thing is, that internal auditor has been bouncing around for about two years. We've kicked it down every time. Now, all of a sudden, people will be leaving very shortly, we want to get it passed. So that's what's happening here. This doesn't even quite pass the smell test. A skunk smells better than this does.
Mr. Flores.
I don't know, this amendment just doesn't, you know, I can't support that the way it's done. You know, you, it's obviously where the votes are, and to me, it's obviously that an open meeting violation has taken place. And I will be filing some charges on that. Thank you.
Macias.
Yes, sir, thank you. I wanted to address the internal auditor.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Mr., Dr. Mackey, can I speak to Ms. Lozano? Ms. Lozano, when did the law come out that school districts could have that position? It was put into the code and school districts were allowed to have an internal auditor? What year was that?
Districts can all, could have, as far as I know, districts could have always had an internal auditor. It's been allowed, it's up to each district, it has been for years, as I mentioned before, 25 years ago, that's how it started in the school district.
But they made, they made a law since I've been on the board.
They made a change to the, I'm answering your specific question, you know, we could have, do any time. The change was made, and I don't know the year exactly, but it was probably, I don't know, seven, eight years ago, nine years ago, that the legislature passed a law saying that if a district is going to have an internal auditor, that that internal auditor will answer to the Board of Trustees. That's the change that was made.
Seven or eight years is close enough for me. I was on the board. Can you verify, Dr. Mackey was not here at that time, can you verify that we had discussion at the time the law change came into place, and it was decided that we were doing well and the board did not vote to hire and make that position?
You're asking to do a lot, to recall a lot.
It's very simple. Did we talk about it at board meeting yesterday?
We did, we did talk about it. Now, whether that law changed before Dr. Mackey came or not, I'd have to go back and see exactly when it changed.
Oh, yes, I can verify that.
As long as you can verify that, and you don't ask me to do it.
I can verify that part. It was before Dr. Mackey came, and we decided not to, but I asked that question because this is not something new. Judson is one of the few districts of our size that have never taken the next step to actually act on the allowance in the law. And so, yes, it's 125,000, but we've saved 125,000 for all these years that we haven't done it. It's 150, right, Richard? 150. So we've saved it all these years, we haven't done it, and I disagree that it's a witch hunt. Dr. Mackey even spoke at the previous board meeting that his peer at Northeast said that it's been very helpful to him, even in his role as the superintendent. And so, that's what we're looking forward to, the superintendent having an additional set of eyes, as well as the board, and making sure that we're doing all we can. But this is not a witch hunt.
Dr. Mackey, may I just say one thing, Dr. Mackey? A couple of things, and just for clarification, and y'all have the data, and maybe y'all know the percentage right off the bat. The attorney from Wash Anderson sent us some information that was collected by, I believe it was Tasby, if I remember correctly, about district sizes and whether or not they had an internal auditor. And just to clarify, you know, I think the statement was made that most school districts are size. I think the percentage is like 20 something percent of districts are size actually have an internal auditor position, just to be, just for clarity.
I didn't see that report. Does Northside have an internal?
Turn my mic, Richard. Does Northside have an internal auditor?
Yes, definitely. There are 90,000 kids.
And we did get information on our packet, and so, how many do they have?
Probably over 100,000 students by now, 90,000 to over 100,000 students.
How many internal auditors do they have?
Oh, I couldn't answer that question. They have more than one, but I don't know exactly.
They have more than one.
They have a department.
Okay. Northeast have an internal auditor?
70,000 plus kids, and yes, they have a department.
And how many do they have?
I don't know how many.
Dr. Mackey, they had four. And what's the other? San Antonio ISD, do they have an internal auditor?
I don't know.
Do they have one, Gilbert?
I think they do.
Okay. That's all I'm saying.
And just another question, I mean, just a point of clarification as well. We do have somebody on staff right now, just to want to make sure that, and I've shared those reports with you in the past, that does all the reviews for us, and they spend a majority, majority part of their time, 70%, 75% of their job, is to review campus and student activity funds. And so they audit those, review them all year round, and submit reports to us and about this. So I just want to make sure that the board still remembers that. We do have a person that currently does that. Thank you.
But that person cannot do anything with the booster club, correct?
We are not legally able to spend funds on doing any, providing any kind of legal services or accounting services for booster clubs. We can set policies as to things that they have to turn in to us for us to check, like a checklist of, you have to provide this, this, and this, but we're not allowed to do audits for them.
But an internal auditor cannot go in audits?
No school district funds can be used for any private entity, so that's correct, sir.
Mr. Macias.
I guess for the benefit of repeating some of these things, I do want to, of course, address the charge that Open Meetings Act violation took place. I can assure you, I had no idea Ms. Adair was going to do this, and to insinuate that we would, would come and then meet and violate that is just poor judgment on your part. If anything, I could make the same assessment on your end before. But the thing is, you're just going down, you're showing poor leadership, and I just had to put that on record. It really is. Poor leadership. No, I'm talking to you. But regardless, you're right. We're going to get back off topic. Bottom line is that there's been so much apprehension about internal audits, it's almost, it's hard to believe. It's like you guys are, and you guys, people you'll see here who'll vote against this, are fearful that we're on a witch hunt. And I'm going to remind the audience and my colleagues that internal auditor works with our superintendent and works with the board. The only thing that's really going to change is we're going to have more information to make some very important decisions. And obviously, you should know that, Mr. Flores. So there is no witch hunt, we're not going to be hunting things down, but we are going to be looking for efficiency. And the creation of this department at the time, at the position our district is in terms of student enrollment, is probably perfectly positioned to ensure that we grow correctly and that we don't mismanage funds, and also look at ways to retain our personnel. So whatever you guys are thinking it is, it's not, it really is probably the best thing this district can implore at this point. And so, you can make all these accusations and all this fear, but it's not that.
Mr. Salya.
Yes. I agree with Mr. Flores. This amendment doesn't pass the smell test. This whole budget process has been about internal auditors and things people want, and I say it again on the last day, what do we do? We cut a bunch of stuff that we've been discussing for three months. That's, that's not how you do business at Judson or anywhere else. I won't be voting for this at all. This is, this is the wrong way to do business. And to address your concern, Mr. Macias, I'll tell you personally, I think you'll use the internal auditor as a vindictive tool against administration and some of the cabinet members. That's just my personal opinion, and that's what I'll say. I'll say it in public, and a lot of people out there think the same thing. So I won't be voting for internal auditor, and I won't be voting for these amendments. And we'll, I'm with Mr. Flores, let's see, we'll see where the chips lie on this, but this is not how you do business in this, in this school district.
Macias.
Mr. President, I call for the question.
May I call for the question? Do we need to vote on that call for the question?
Okay. Do you want to, okay. Go ahead. Okay. Four, three. Will we get to vote now for the amendment that we have made?
Didn't somebody say that there had to be three quarters of the vote? I think so, yeah, wasn't it? Had to be three quarters of the people.
Mr. LaFoy. We need to tell us what we need to do.
Okay, so now we're, oh, any other questions?
I agree with everything that Gilbert and Seaver said, and I think we probably need something to go forward on this and look at this. There's something wrong with this. 100% wrong. Just looking at the votes, you can tell that. I says, the thing is, I talked to TEA today, and I've got an appointment with them tomorrow. I will be going up there, and I'm going to have some answers, one way or another.
Macias.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight might be the first night that the board enters into a filibuster. I would like to state for the record that this district is about to embark upon the hiring of a new superintendent. We will not get a quality superintendent if they look at our board meetings, which are now on YouTube. Thank you, Mr. Technology, Mr. Young. If they find that this board is still in a state of bickering and, we don't have to agree, I don't expect you to agree or support. I do think we need to conduct ourselves in a mature, respectful manner to each other. I don't think we should make innuendos or slanderous type remarks toward each other in a public setting. I don't think it serves any purpose. And I did not speak with Mr. Macias, but I spent a lot of time on this budget. I gave up a lot of things that I could have done with my family this month, and I tried to review and question, and I tried to find other ways and means of what we could do. And honestly, you know, we're out of time. I appreciated the fact that some of our board members had emergency family needs or they had work requirements. And so, all I'm asking for is that the board come back. I'll be requesting a work session just for special ed, so we can discuss all of those items in more time and in more detail. This is not a denial, this is a delay. But tonight is a vote for the budget for the year. There's no taking back positions and amending this budget. There's only adding to. And, you know, Mr. Flores, Mr. Salya, you know, I welcome your open meetings violation request you're going to submit. If I recall, three years ago, when Ms. Sutton, Ms. Williams, excuse me, and I were sworn into the board, you sat at the podium and you made the same type of threats. And you came after us in the court system, and things were done that I won't degrade this district, but they were done intentionally with malice. And if that's the next direction you're going, I can only say I'm trying to complete my term, but I will not be dedicating any more years of my life volunteering to try to help my community, only to be attacked whenever my decisions do not agree with another board member. And so, this is my rock, I'm standing on it, and whichever way the vote turns out, I will support whatever the board decides. But please remember, the community, not just the Judson community, but the education community is looking at you and determining whether or not they want to come and work in this district.
I remember last year when we come up with a budget, it was over last year, and we made cuts in personnel. It was the year before last, wasn't it? Was that last year or the year before? Two years ago? Made cuts on personnel. That hurt a lot of people. This year, we're making cuts in personnel again. I can't support this budget at all. I'm very sorry. sorry, but I just can't support it, and...
Any other questions, discussion? We're ready to vote on the amendment that was made to the proposed budget. Is that correct, Ms. Adair?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, either accept the amendment or we don't, right?
Yes.
Motion to amend, Harris. Now, we go back, and we're voting on the proposed...
Ballot, or?
Ballot.
Yeah, I have a motion to amend, to take the educational dietiticians from pay grade, pay grade three to pay grade four. The educational dietiticians to increase their pay grade from pay grade three to pay grade four. That's my motion. Now, if you second, we can discuss it.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, motion by Mr. Macias to amend, second by Ms. Williams.
Yes. Well, I'll, I'll discuss once. What, we actually had addressed this issue at one of our budget workshops. It wasn't recommended to give that increase from pay grade three to pay grade four. During the budget work session, and I'm not sure if, if we were all present, but I know that we discussed it to some degree, I had some concerns about the quality in terms of their, the educational dietiticians, their work, and felt that it was more appropriate to have them at the pay grade four, which is on par with San Antonio ISD's educational dietiticians. The work that they do, I think, merits that, and so that's where that comes from. So, you didn't see that as a recommendation here in this budget, but it's just something I think that administration has overlooked. I mean, it happens, and so I think we probably need to make amends on that.
Mr. LaFoy.
What's the cost on this?
Thank you, good question.
You know I'd ask that. Dr. Mackey, can you tell me the cost on this?
Uh, just because moving to pay grade, something that moves out.
So, there'll be no cost?
I don't know, because what's the cost for a loan?
If we raise it, what would the cost be? I want to know how much money it's going to cost us if we do this. I sure can't vote on something I don't know what the cost is.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Salyer, can I, Mr. Salyer, can I speak one second? Um, I would request Mr. Macias to withdraw this motion until we have that work session with special ed, because this is a part of the special ed department.
And Ms. Macias?
I can't, I mean, we could vote on it.
I was here for this meeting, and it was explained to us that these two people don't do the same thing. Their jobs are very different from what the other school districts do. They're not certified to do everything for the pay grade increase. I was here for that meeting, and that was explained to us. You're trying to raise a pay, a level of pay for someone doesn't do the same job. That was explained to us in that meeting. And I agree with Mr. LaFoy. I don't know what it costs, so I can't vote for it. Because they do two very different things, and that was explained to us. I was here for that meeting. Right, Ms. Salinas? You were here too, right?
I'll say something. Ms. Adair. Oh, Ms. Williams.
I have the same questions as Richard. Thank you.
Okay.
As far as you said, they don't do the same thing. Well, they do some things that the LSSPs don't do. For example, they are certified teachers. LSSPs, if I remember correctly, are not certified teachers. They don't have certification. So, therefore, if these two positions were to be eliminated eventually, because they said through attrition, we might eliminate them, well, who's going to pick up all the testing that they have to do?
And I agree with you, Aron, but I changed the job description. If we're going to change that to job description, and we're trying to elevate somebody without a change in job description.
And I think that was discussed that night. Remember?
Yeah, but it wasn't done.
And, and I agree, and I think Ms. Adair said maybe he had a pulley, so we can discuss that during the special ed, uh, special ed that we want to have. So, we can discuss that fully, the whole department. Is that correct, ma'am? And then, I, I would support something like that, too.
Thank you. Ms. Adair. I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Macias. Did you want to do that, too?
When, when would these work sessions start?
Well, hopefully, sometime in July or August.
My, my only concern, obviously, is that sometimes we just take too long to be responsive. And, and I'm going to say that because when I look back at the internal audit that we passed in November of 2013, it took so long that we ended up here, and we never did the internal audit. And this board voted back then in November to do that. So, as long as we're able to, to do some things timely, I, I would be okay with that. So, which means I would request that we probably hold our first work session on this in, in early August or...
I request July.
In July?
Well, if we...
I'm finished.
If you can, in July, that would be fine. We'll try, because we have several things coming up in July. One of the things is that I do want to see, and I agree with Mr. Salyer, I do want to see the job descriptions.
Well, then, then in lieu of that, I'll go ahead and pull this motion. We'll go ahead and, and schedule through you, Mr. Salinas, a work session in July, so that we can amend or evaluate appropriately.
Okay.
Uh, just a quick question. It was on the, on page four for the board, and I, I'm not sure if we had the answer to this, but I did not know this before. The cut for transportation was three percent. It was about fifty thousand dollars. But I, I was just curious as what that cut was, because I don't remember that. And, you know, we're adding routes for Copperfield and for STEM and different areas, so where that fifty thousand dollars is being cut?
Actually, reducing routes for Copperfield, because all those kids now are walking to school.
Okay, a lot of them are, right?
Pretty much came up with STEM, pretty much took those buses, so it was almost a wash in that area.
Okay.
It was a partial piece, though, of the, go ahead.
Okay. The answer to your question is that, you're looking at the revenue that we receive from the state for the transportation routes. And so, that difference is, for the thirteen, fourteen school year, we originally budgeted fifty thousand dollars more than what we're budgeting for the fourteen, fifteen school year. And the fourteen, fifteen school year is based on the actual thirteen, fourteen number. Okay, so our original estimate for thirteen, fourteen was a little bit high. And the way that number's calculated is that the Transportation Department every year submits a report in the summer to the Texas Education Agency, and as to how many miles we traveled for the regular program, and how many miles we traveled for the special programs. They have a per mileage reimbursement rate, and they determine how much money they're going to give us. And that's why that, so it's not really an expense reduction. It's more of a revenue reduction from the state based on the miles that we've actually traveled.
Okay, thank you. That makes much more sense. I was just worried we're just taking that of spending money. Thank you.
But they go a year back? They do the year...
When we forecast for the next school year, they always tell us to use the prior year's actual numbers to forecast the prior year, I mean, the, excuse me, the next year. So, it's going to be a little bit different, you know, when they find, when we finally submit the mileage. If it was more, that we travel more mileage, of course, they're going to give us, it's going to be, the amount they reimburse us is going to be based on the actual mileage. But they always tell us to forecast based on the previous year actual number. And that's at one million six twenty-two.
Okay, so, what's not in mind, maybe, uh, either August or September, maybe, I don't think we've ever brought transportation to people, say, complete, uh, way that they're, you know, employed, buses, routes, and all of that. Maybe, give them time, maybe sometime in September.
What about August, Mr. President? Your question was...
Oh, August. Well, I said August, but I, I think they need more time than what we're doing in, uh, Jackie, it is the board meeting in August. What day?
August is not a good time. September is a bad time. You might go out all the way.
Right.
Okay, good, good idea.
No, right.
Well, thank you for the recommendation. Yeah, okay, sometime in September, we'll, we'll have a, a session. Okay, any other questions?
I have a motion to amend.
Yes, sir.
Motion to amend.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to amend that we give each employee twenty-five more dollars on their insurance for this month. I think the cost's about nine hundred thousand. This board talks a lot about retention of teachers and doing the right thing for teachers. Insurance is hurting people, and we've sort of done a lot of stuff. So, I make a motion to amend that we give each employee twenty-five more dollars on their insurance for this next fiscal year.
Second. Okay, we have a, we have a motion, a motion to amend by Mr. Salyer, second by Mr. Flores. Discussion. Mr. LaFoy.
Cost?
About nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred thousand? Well, good to me. Give something back to the teachers. They deserve everything we give them.
Yes, but that would keep you all employees from the issues. Uh, Mr. Whoa, Mr. LaFoy. You finished, Mr. LaFoy?
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Williams.
Thank you. This has been a huge concern for me for a while now, especially with changes in the healthcare costs. And I'm absolutely in favor of, of, you know, helping and supporting this cause. But my only question, and I think it might be more back to HR and all, is just the actual impact for twenty-five. You know, it's just throwing that number out there. What exactly that's going to do? Because I'm all for throwing that out there and supporting it, and I will support it, but specifically, twenty-five dollars, how much more that actually helps our employees, just for the...
Ms. Howard.
Okay, thank you.
Um, it actually does not increase the benefit at all. It would maybe maintain what we currently have. It's not going to get us any advantage.
And that's my concern, just with the raising, the rising costs and everything, because that's just my concern as a board member, and that's where I'm a little bit conflicted, is because of the cost going up.
Maintains, which it says it's maintaining. We're not increasing, we're maintaining, and that's the point.
Right, and I understand that, but I'm also, in this window of time, when we're out there looking at, at insurance, I'm just concerned, can we do more than that?
Amend my motion, make it more.
I'm just, okay, well, I'm just, again, I'm trying to...
You want to do more, make a amendment.
Well, I do, but we don't have the money to even do twenty-five. So, for me to amend above that is, is difficult. But that's what I'm asking is, and if we did, if we did do more than twenty-five, what would actually, so twenty-five would maintain us. What would actually make even more of a difference? And, and that's what I'm kind of looking for. But, but it's okay. I'm just hypothetically speaking.
Ms. Williams, we discussed this at a previous budget meeting?
Right.
And if I recall correctly, what we heard was, they're in the middle of negotiations, and we also discussed having our employers pay and allowing them to opt out, if you will.
Right.
And so, my understanding is that we're going to discuss that at a future board meeting.
Right, that's where I...
So, Mr. Salyer, I brought that up at the last budget meeting, the twenty-five dollars per employee, and we did not have the nine hundred thousand dollars to do that. I agree with you. I think that's a good idea, but just the twenty-five dollars is not going to be sufficient. And so, at a future board meeting, when we discuss that, we still always have the option to add that back in.
Mr. Ma, Mr. Macias.
Um, Mr. Elzondo, the readjusted figures, are you still working on that?
Well, and the reason why I, I'm asking is because obviously, we're looking probably at saving some revenue by cutting those items, and that would go back to this item if we even have nine hundred thousand dollars. So, based on what that figure looks like, I would just caution, I, I'm supportive of this. I, I, if, if we, back in, a few months ago, one of the things that I really thought would make this district stand out would be to have a stronger benefits package for our employees. I certainly don't like just randomly thinking of a number and putting it out there. And after Mrs. Howard's remarks about its impact, I'm, I'm not even, I'm, I'm a little worried that that may not make the impact that nine hundred thousand dollars you would think would do. So, I would say that we revisit this as well. And again, this is something I think a board needs to be doing throughout the year. We shouldn't be just talking about budgets a little bit in March and April, and I mean, this is a year-long obligation. So, naturally, we need to take a look at our insurance and see what we can do to make it much more impactful for our employees, which means to take a look at the committee's remarks, look at some of our competitors. I mean, this is what an intelligent body does, and we don't just throw numbers out there and say, okay, we want to do that. So, I would just say that I'm in a total agreement that we need to increase those benefits. Just how? I would think you would agree that we need to make it impactful. And if we know that twenty-five dollars already isn't going to cut that, then we probably just need to pause a second and come back and revisit this, this idea.
Mr. Salyer.
Yes. My point is, is hold it at where it's at. Yes, we need more. They need a hundred dollars more a month. We don't have the money to do it. But twenty-five dollars will help hold their funding, their insurance policies where it's at.
And, and I, I agree. Also, we discussed what Ms. Adair was saying, that the employees, what would happen, for example, we say, we're going to give you twenty-five, and are you willing to put twenty-five, which would make it two hundred and, three hundred and twenty-five? Is that correct? And I think Mr. Flores, or somebody said, by doing that, then they can go and, what was that called, sir?
To the exchange.
Oh, they can go to the exchange. Do you think that would help going to the exchange?
For some, yeah. Sorry. For some, we got, some want.
We should have been moving off the agenda for a little bit this time, but we did have a lot of discussion about it, and I would bring that back, discuss the detail. We're sure you had time to find out what actions...
Hi, Richard.
What actions we needed to take to allow the employees to do that. We were going to check with our attorneys, and we were going to bring that back. I don't think we have any answers from Monday night to tonight.
Mr. Flores.
Thank you. Yeah, that's what we were talking about. You know, we gave twenty-five, and they put in twenty-five. I think that they'd be able to get better benefits at three twenty-five, and, you know, then they would also be eligible for the exchange. You know, seeing that that figure roughly was about nine hundred thousand, and the cut that you made June totaled eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars on your amendment, so, you know, I can, you know...
But are you suggesting names? I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm, you know, I'm just saying that, you know, you took out eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Go ahead.
And, so, we're talking about this, something that will benefit the, the employees, and I can tell you, it would benefit them if we were able to go to three hundred and twenty-five dollars for the policy. Thank you.
And that would be, oh, I'm sorry. Ms., Mr. Macias.
I'm going to let Ms. Adair go ahead. I mean, she's, I'll go after her.
Mr. Flores, I agree. However, your amend, Mr. Salyer's amendment to do the nine hundred thousand would permanently cut out those positions. My amendment does not permanently cut out any. The money that I'm saying is, we're going to go back and look at those one by one. But if we vote tonight...
if we vote tonight to put twenty-five dollars of nine hundred thousand, those other positions are permanently gone away, we have all of the special ed, because you, you've spent the money.
This is mutually exclusive.
Same hot money, we only have a limited amount of money.
We got rid of it, but spending on employees. Ms., Mr. Macias.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna say, Ms. Sider, so, that, that's quite all right, uh, we're, we're thinking about the same thing. I am serious about taking a look at what administration comes back and working with the board to look at these positions that we're not funding at this moment, but, uh, we clearly would be at a disadvantage if we went ahead and, and moved forward with the, this nine hundred thousand dollar expenditure. I, I do see us having to use fund balance money then to potentially fund some of these positions, so I, I don't think you get that, Mr. Salier, so I wanted to make sure to put that on record.
But it's not on the table, you took it off, it's not on the table.
Well, we...
You can't go back and say, we're gonna go back and do something.
We shouldn't just go spend it again.
That's why you have a budget.
So...
You have a budget, you cut it from the budget, it's mutually exclusive.
Well, at this point...
You can't say, well, we're gonna go back and redo this money, we should've done it in this budget.
At this point, I'd like to see what administration has to do in terms of recommending, and honestly, administration didn't recommend twenty-five dollars as well, so, let's just be intelligent, take a step back.
Vote, vote how you wanna vote, but people are watching.
I, I just want it to be impactful. I don't wanna be just throwing money just to look good. I mean, we gotta do it correctly, and so I think, as I mentioned earlier, we do need to increase our benefits package, but it needs to be impactful, and so how do we do that? So that, at the end, as you mentioned, a lot of talk about retention and attrition, that we do it the right way, and I think just kind of putting the figure out there just to look good is, is wrong. So, have you come up with an official total? Was Mr. Flores's assessment correct? Did we save or we didn't approve? Dr. Mackey?
Can I have Mr. Elzondo give me that number?
Based on the, uh, the amendment that, uh, Ms. Sider proposed, the savings is, uh, or what's not being, is nine hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred dollars.
All right, thank you, you're, you're our expert, so I appreciate that. Um, anyway, so that's just my, my take. Again, I, I want to go on record that I think we need to increase our benefits, we need to do something about that. Um, it, it pains me to think that we're paying into this benefits package and our employees aren't even taking advantage of it, um, so, that's all.
I have a, a question. If we were to do that and ask the employees, well, we're gonna ask you to give us twenty-five dollars, well, if they don't give you, you take it out of their check, um, does that have to be done before school starts, or could that be done, let's say, when they, they come back with all the information, could that be done in September? Or, how, how would that work?
It would go into effect in January, our plan year starts in January, so we would obviously notify the employees upon their return, or at the board approval of whatever amount that the board decides is appropriate, and then it would go into effect in January twenty fifteen with the plan year. So, we essentially take that first deduction in December.
So, if we don't vote for it tonight, and we wanna do it later, we probably will either have to go to the fund balance, is that correct? We probably would have to go, what's it, we would probably have to go to the fund balance? Yeah, I know, I know, but I'm, I'm saying, because once all these things that were amended, uh, some of those might have come back, some of those might not, and then after that, we could always, I, I just wanna make sure the employees have a say-so. How they feel, are you willing to come up with twenty-five dollars a month? We're gonna give you another twenty-five, it'll be a total of three hundred and twenty-five, but then you're gonna have a better choice as far as insurance, some of them might, okay? Uh, so, is that possible?
To answer your question, Ms. Williams, um, the way that the funds, if y'all decided at some point that the district was gonna increase the contribution?
Yes.
They would either come out of fund balance, or depending on what happened during the year, if we have more students show up to the district, more, you know, we have savings somewhere else, we, it may come out of the current year revenue, it just depends on what are the things we expend. If y'all do a lot of amendments throughout the year, then, you know, that may come out of fund balance, so it just, it really depends on, uh, what our revenues look like for the rest of the year, how many children, how many students actually show up for school, because we have a certain projection, if we have more show up, or they're in attendance more, then it may come out of just the current revenues and doesn't have to come out of fund balance. And your question about by when does the board have to make that decision? The requests or proposals are already out on the street right now, and they're due, Ms. Rashmore, what's, help me on the date? The sixteenth? July what? Okay, July the eighth is when the proposal will be back to the district. Our goal was to bring something back to the board, uh, during the July meeting, so what's gonna happen, though, is when those proposals come back, when we go back to tell, to talk to the insurance companies about, hey, what kind of program can you offer for our, uh, excuse, benefits can you offer for our employees? If we come back and tell them that, um, we're gonna, you know, put in more money into the, into the, uh, premium from the district portion, and then if, on top of that, we tell them, hey, well, the employees are also gonna have to pay as well, even for the reduced plan, the free plan that we call it right now, so let's say right now, we're buying something that costs us two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Okay.
And then we come back and say, well, guess what, the district's now gonna pay three hundred dollars, right? And on top of that, we're gonna ask the employee to contribute another twenty-five dollars. So all of a sudden now, the insurance company has another fifty dollars that they're counting on per employee, that they can look at the whole entire program of their benefits and say, can we offer something better? But in order for that to happen, we have to commit to them that, hey, this is what you can expect, because they're not gonna give us their best plan, you know, for fifty dollars more if we don't commit to saying, you're gonna have fifty dollars more per employee. So, we're gonna have to know that sooner rather than later, uh, probably by the July board meeting, probably even before then, um, so that we can tell the insurance company, hey, we have another fifty dollars that you can count on getting, so what can you do for that? Um, or, or what we can do as well is tell the insurance company, hey, give us some alternates. If we do what we're currently doing, if we do fifty dollars more, if we do twenty-five dollars more, give us some different things so that the board can evaluate that and decide, okay, this is what we think is best for, for our employees in the district.
Okay, I, I have a question, either for Mr. Flores or Ms. Sider. If I was to ask for a table, that means we have to bring it back, let's say I wanna table it until the September, but...
You can't table it, this is in the middle of the...
Over the amendment?
He can always bring it back and make, make the motion for the future.
So, yeah, so, a decision, a decision will have to be made in the month of July, just so that you know, overall, we're gonna have to decide something in July.
Yes, sir, uh, Mr., Mr. President, we, we have numerous meetings anyway, um, my understanding was we were going to get, um, some advice from our attorneys, and we were gonna bring this back and find out what figures. We spent quite a bit of time at the last meeting discussing full-time benefits, cost, um, and I don't think this is a simple, um, I understand what you're saying, um, Mr. Flores, but I, I think this insurance item deserves, um, an agenda item and some discussion with advice from our attorneys on how we can best, um, help our employees. Mr. Flores, you went here, but we talked about the five thousand dollar deductible that the employees had, and, you could hear that part?
I could hear it, but some people didn't hear my side. Ms. Williams?
Thank you. I know, Stevie, said people are watching, and I honestly, I sure hope they are. This is, we spend a lot of money in this district and on a lot of things, and I think most all of them are very needed, but I think this is one of the more important things we spend money on, and, um, you know, the board may disagree or agree, but if we don't have healthy employees, and it's gonna impact everything. We can't get our kids to school if we don't have healthy bus drivers to get them there in a transportation firm, we can't teach them, we can't, we cannot function if we don't take care of our employees, and I think that's, you know, such an important rule in any aspect of any business, education, anything, so I am all for, and I have always been for, increasing this amount, but I definitely wanna see just a little bit more and look into the aspect of employees contributing as well to make the biggest bank for the buck, because I think it's that important, that's all, thank you.
Mr. Macias.
Um, Mr. Slunis, should we, uh, take a recess to ca, uh, contact legal counsel? I, I just would hate to make a vote without having that advice that we were scheduled to have anyway, and, and so if, if you would like to call our attorneys...
We're gonna take a ten-minute recess.
To call them?
Can we do?
I can't do that.
Oh, can?
We have a closed session.
Oh, okay, let's go to close, oh, okay, can we go to, yeah, can we go to close?
First, you try and have available those close sessions before we call a call.
Oh, okay, well, she's gonna call. Right, okay, take a break. Back in session at seven twenty, seven twenty-three. This board will be going into, uh, closed session. We will now enter closed session pursuant to the following section of Texas Open Meeting Sac, five five one point zero seven one, private consultation with board's attorney. And now, seven point three four, we go into closed session. We have the end. We have a writer, one, oh. We have that. We have a second session. We are back from a second session, and it's now seven forty-four, no vote was taken while in the second session, with only consultation with the, uh, with the attorney, consultation with attorney. We are back now in the regular session, and we had an amendment made by Mr. Salier. Do we have any further discussion? Oh, uh, Mr. Macias.
Um, I, then, I just wanted to, uh, just confirm a few figures, just in case this measure were to pass. Um, we were one point nine million dollars in deficit, right? So with Ms. Sider's motion, amendment, we ended up saving or not spending nine hundred and fifteen thousand, so basically, we still have a million dollars to still balance, so to speak.
Approximately.
Approximately.
A million thirty-six thousand.
A million thirty-six. So if this were to pass, it would put us right back at one point nine million dollars. Um, this is, um, again, a very worthy, um, thank you, Mr. Elzondo, this is very worthy to do, and it's something I agree with doing, but it's, it's not balancing our budget. Um, so, I again would implore my colleagues to consider, uh, the same strategy of being, um, thoughtful about how we're going to increase benefits for our employees, but not to make an emotional decision today to do that, because that's not really helping our, our bottom line. So, we're trying to balance a budget today, and, um, 'cause otherwise, I, I think there was a concern I had the other day about increasing employee wages, or teacher wages specifically for retention, that, again, we have, we have that ceiling of six point five that we can't seem to break, so if we're looking at trying to spend money, that probably would be, um, a priority to consider as well. So, I, I think if we can't find, what, we're to find one point nine million, and we're down to a million, and adding nine hundred thousand more to it now, I, I just think we're putting ourselves back in the same boat that we're trying to dig ourselves out of, so.
Ms. Sider.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna say that I, um, if I recall correctly, I originally brought the twenty-five dollars and twenty-five dollars to this board to consider, and after hearing from the superintendent administration that we did not have nine hundred thousand, um, then I let it go. We had extensive discussion on the insurance. I don't think the insurance is something that can be determined, um, at, at a whim. If this board votes to pay the nine hundred thousand dollars for insurance, then I will make an amendment and bring back all of those positions that I removed, because we will have effectively, um, done nothing.
Yep.
You know, it, it took a lot, um, for me to make that amendment and request that we look at those positions, because I know almost all of these people that are affected with my motion, um, but the intent was to get us down to a reasonable overage, which one million thirty-six is reasonable, and then we work on it. Um, if you look at your budget on page five, where we look, compared our twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen budget, and the superintendent gave us a couple of documents tonight, um, we amended the budget over the year last year to add...
Can I see your paper a second, Richard? Can I borrow this one?
To add, uh, one million four hundred and forty-three thousand additional allocations on this paper, right here. And so we know that we add allocations based on student ratio, based on needs, based on arts, um, and so to give nine hundred thousand to insurance without having considered the employee requests, uh, would be a travesty to me. So if this passes, um, Mr. President, and I will motion to bring back all of the positions that I deleted, because it was not my intention to throw the money out and not meet the needs of our district.
Mr. LaFoy.
I'm back. Last year, after adding all these different little things that we added at the end, did we have a balanced budget, Dr. Mackey? Huh?
Last year, after the board added those items?
Yeah.
Um, take a second. Yes, we had a surplus of a hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven zero one.
There you go, we still had a balanced budget last year, after adding this stuff. Now, what's going wrong here this year? We can't give the employees twenty-five dollars? Hold on, give me a break. You cut positions?
I'll give them back to you.
You cut people? But, when it comes up to giving them something, nobody wants to do that. I'm for this.
Uh, Ms., Mr. Salier.
Yes, um, I'm hearing a lot of people say, yeah, I'm for this, I'm for this, I want this, I agree, but they're gonna vote against it, okay? Ms. Sider?
Sir, we haven't voted, so you can't say they're gonna vote against it.
Well, I, Jane just said she's gonna vote against it.
Oh, did I say?
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're gonna vote against it, 'cause you said, you're implied, okay, you implied, and then, because I don't get my way, I'm gonna bring back everything that I already cut. So, I mean, this, this makes no sense to me. Um, everybody talks about helping the employees out and doing the right thing for employees, I put something in there to help the employees, and now I'm gonna take my tiddlywinks and go home. So, I'm, I'm, I made this motion, I'm not pulling it, we're gonna vote it up or down, and people can derive from that what they want from the board members.
I, I just wanted to ver, oh, you finished, sir? Wanted to verify with Mr. LaFoy. You are correct, sir, remember, we didn't have a STEM last year that we're gonna start this year. We did not have a new elementary that we're starting this year, and I think that's where the difference, the difference is, okay? So, we still balance what? Yeah, but we didn't have... When we started, this, uh, the middle school, when you started the middle school last year? We're there before. We're getting there, sir, I'm talking about H, you and I are getting there, sir. Okay.
But we still have a balanced board.
And we're, and if you recall, two years ago, I think, when, maybe three years ago, when we had to take from the fund balance three point something million, then after the end of the year, everything balanced all right, because we did have.
But we still have a balanced board.
Yes. Okay, here, I have a question. If I read on page five, Mr. or Dr. Mackey, and then you can tell Jose, estimated on assigned fund balance, the, I see there twenty-nine million nine hundred and seven thousand eight seventy-one, and we already took out the three million. Is that correct?
Let me tell you what that number represents. That twenty-nine million nine oh seven eight seventy-one, that's the trigger for you going below the percentage that the board has established for the school district. So we're thinking that we're going to have thirty-two million nine hundred and thirty-three, so you're still okay, and that is taking out the three million dollars for the land. If you were to go below that twenty-nine million, then that means you violate your own policy about what kind of a budget you can adopt. So I put that out there in case we start doing a lot of things we know that's the magic number. Once you go below that twenty-nine million dollars in fund balance, then you violated the policy.
So what we need to do here, then, put some alligator clips. Is that what we learned the other night, alligator clips? If it's open, be careful, because they're ready to bite you, right? Okay, so then the thirty-two nine something, so then we're talking about thirty-two, thirty-three nine five nine, if we were to pass this?
If you were to pass the budget without Mr. Sawyer's amendment and only with Ms. Adair's amendment, then we would be like at thirty-three nine. But if we were to leave, you know, still pass Ms. Adair's amendment and also pass Mr. Sawyer's amendment?
Correct.
We'll end up in the same boat where we started, just about as far as money's concerned, and we would end up with a thirty-two point nine million dollar fund balance at the end of the year, as our estimate.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Adair.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I find myself forced to respond to Mr. Sawyer's tiddlywinks comment. I'm very, very sorry that you are unable to make all of the budget meetings, because we spent extensive time speaking of employee raises, one percent raises, and to any of our community, employees and parents, businessmen, please go back and look and listen to the previous budget meetings. We did not come here tonight to make a decision in one hour, two hours. We have spent numerous hours on this. The reason, Mr. Salier, I said what I said is, it's not a matter of taking my tiddlywinks and going home, because I actually should already be home. I'm making a sacrifice by being here. But it's because I'm not going to go against my own principle, which, when I said we would come back and reconsider those positions, if this board spends a million dollars on the insurance, which we know our employees need and deserve, and we still need to visit that, then we have not given ourselves the space to do any of those things in special ed or any of those other things. And therefore, it would be remiss on my part to leave here, having said, this was why I was doing it, we're going to come back and visit it, and then we turn around and spend the money, thus not being able to have that leeway to come back and visit those areas. And I want to be clear on that. I am certainly not opposed to twenty-five dollars. It was my recommendation in the first place that we do twenty-five, twenty-five, opt-out. I'm the one that had the attorney send that packet to the board on the insurance. And one of the things that I will not do this year is I will not be silent and not speak out. So you can expect I will be speaking more. I try to keep the peace, I try to be reasonable, but I'm not going to allow my name or what I'm thinking and what I'm doing to be misquoted or misconstrued. And so, you know, let the votes fall where they may, but the intent of the First Amendment was to allow us to budget with under two million. We would budget with one million thirty-six, which is still over. And I really expected you and Mr. Flores, as conservative Republican people, to support a closer balanced budget and not to go up after we bring it down. So I'm a little disappointed. I know you all have met with the superintendent. So I'm disappointed, but I'm a big girl, and when it's over, I will support whatever decision this board votes for.
Well, Ms. Adair. I'm disappointed, too, that we have stuff like an internal auditor in this budget, which is an absolute, complete waste. We have a lot of stuff in this budget to waste. You chose to make the motion, you chose what you wanted to take out. I wanted a light item on it, you packed it all together. I said, this is how we do business. But yet, your supporters on this board, and what you did was you made it a package deal, okay? And that's wrong. That's not how you do business, okay? Now, the threat, now, the threat that you said, well, if this passes, I'm going to bring it all back, that's tiddlywink. I'm taking, you're taking your stuff and going home, because you don't like how it's working. So then you're going to add another eight hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand to the budget. So, you know, I'm just, people are talking on both sides of their mouth here. They're saying they want to support the employees, but yet, I'm for this, I'm for this, but we're not going to do it. Well, I'm standing my ground and saying employees are important, and I'm agreeing with you and Mr. Mancias that retention's important and pay packages are important, so I put this in the budget, and I'm not pulling it, we're going to vote on this. So we can discuss it all you want, but there's going to be a vote, and people will derive how people vote from how they vote. No, I'm not, I want people to speak.
Mr. LaFoy.
All right, we've been talking about retaining employees. We don't know why they leave. They put on their, you know, other reasons, whatever they want. The thing is, maybe they're leaving because the insurance sucks. I hate to say it that way, but maybe that's it. Bad insurance? I see a lot of heads shaking yes down there. These employees are leaving for some reason. We pay good, but maybe our insurance is no good. Let's look at this very closely before we vote it down, because this might keep some of our employees. Thank you.
Ms. Mancias.
I just would hate to make a hasty decision. The disappointment with this is that not all of us attended all the budget meetings, and so, as Ms. Adair pointed out, there was extensive discussion. It is disheartening to hear that people would showboat just to see if, you know, they're up here making motions just to look good, rather than making hard decisions. Guys, you've told me this in the past. You can't get everything in the budget. We just can't do it. And so this is one of those moments where we can't do it. And so that's why I think there's some showboating, because obviously, I'm concerned about it. I don't think we have nine hundred thousand dollars to do without an appropriate study. I do agree with Mr. LaFoy, that insurance could be one of the factors, but we haven't even studied it. And so if we would have had an HR audit back in November, we probably would know that answer for sure. But we are going to add an internal audit department this year, and hopefully by next budget cycle, we will know why employees are leaving. But we need to look like we are thinking about what we're doing, and so I can't stress that enough. I would welcome revisit of this insurance aspect. I think that Mr. Lazzando's actually attended sessions with other providers to see what might be better for our employees. Obviously, surveying employees is a very intellectual and appropriate step to take. But, you know, I'm just fearful that some of my colleagues may just want to react on emotion, which at the end is going to hurt this district.
Okay, we have an amendment to the budget. We're ready to vote. Is it a vote for the amendment or don't vote for the amendment? And we are voting, Mr. Sawyer, to give the employees the next twenty-five dollars to help with their needs, is that correct? And then, will we ask the employees to?
No, they're not. They're not.
Oh, no, no, no. Oh, I see, never mind, never mind, okay. We have a vote. The, the passage. Okay, now, any other amendments to the budget before we go on the amended budget?
Mr. President, I have an amendment.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to reverse and cancel the amendment as stated originally.
Okay. Do we have a motion? What, we didn't get a motion?
That wasn't amended motion. There was no seconded vote.
Oh, okay. Okay, now we can vote, no discussion?
Nobody does. Hit yourself a little bit. No second. Yeah, no, no, nobody's seconded. So you don't have to vote. No vote, no second. I moved, I moved to reverse the amendment and put all the, reinstate? Okay. Reinstate all the positions that were deleted by my previous amendment. Is there a second?
I second.
Who second? Thank you, Mr. Mancias.
Yeah, discussion.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I believe that Mr., that Superintendent Mackey and his staff brought these positions to the board in the budget because they felt they were needed. And since this is the budget and we're making these decisions, and we're not going to have the opportunity to reevaluate this, then I move that the positions be reinstated back into the budget.
Mr. LaFoy.
It looks like we're playing boomerang here. You know what a boomerang is? Throw it out, comes back to you. June, why did you make the motion to take these out? You thought they should come out, right?
I thought we should discuss them at a later stage.
Well, the thing is.
We don't have the time to do that.
Mr. Mancias.
Oh, boy. I was thinking to say more.
Well, obviously, I wasn't very happy about the previous vote. I think that we probably should have been a little more cautious, but, again, this is a majority rules, and so I put my opinion out there. But I will say that compounding the problem by adding everything would just make things even worse. So right now, we're looking at one point nine. If we were to add this additional nine hundred and fifteen, it would be two point, two point eight. And so, you know, I respect what Ms. Adair is saying, but we're just, we're just creating an avalanche of issues. We, and my, my request was to revisit some of these positions. Obviously, that's going to still occur, but we just have less money to deal with as we move forward on this. So, no, I, you know, I'm not going to play games. I'm very tempted to amend a motion and add salary increases for teachers, but that is really truly just playing games. I think we need them, but it's just not the right time to do it. So we'll revisit that, and I hope by next budget cycle, we'll have an adequate plan for that. So as you can tell, I'm a little embarrassed, but, oh, well.
Yes. As my colleagues have said tonight, I mean, you know, June, you shouldn't have took it out, you know, because this is a budget. You don't go forward and say, we're going to revisit something and spend money in the future on the budget. You know that's not how it's done. So, I mean, this is, you should have left it in there. It's how, what's, you don't take things out and say, you said, well, we'll revisit this in the future. You don't revisit things in the future to balance a budget, which is what you just said you were going to do. You wanted to revisit this in the future and spend the money in the future. It was a budget item, it's dead. We can revisit all you want, but, you know, this is not how you do business here, and it reflects it tonight.
Ms. Adair.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. I beg to differ, Mr. Sawyer. A budget is a living, breathing document, and if you look at your packet, we made changes to our budget. We had four budget amendments, Mr. Lazzando? Three?
Well, we had, I think, three large amendments, and we had several for other special projects throughout the year.
So we had an excess of three budget amendments this year. We added four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in November for additional teachers, and then we added another one million four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for additional teachers that's on the budget amendment we just voted for. The only thing that is permanent in this budget is personnel. Insurance is personnel, personnel of personnel. Those two items, and I can wait until Ms. Williams finishes, because, it's important, I'm sorry to hear me, those two items are non-reversible. We can cut the board budget, we can cut the curriculum budget, we can cut departments, but we cannot go back and cut personnel, which personnel includes adding personnel, and it also includes insurance. So with that being said, I would do a disservice to the people that's on this list by not saying, well, the board decided we didn't need to take more time and save passing a almost two million dollar budget. The board felt it was okay. So if we feel it's okay to pass a two million dollar budget, then by all means, let us give them the positions they've asked for. But I think you can look in your packet, and you can see where the board has changed and added personnel. But the only time we can delete personnel is with a RIF, which, as Mr. LaFoy stated earlier, had a huge detrimental effect on morale when we did the RIF. So it's better not to give than to give and take away. But once you give this insurance, you cannot take it away, which you voted to do, and once you give these positions, you cannot take them away without a RIF or doing away with the program. So we won't get a superintendent this rate, Richard, that's good, but anyway.
June, the bottom line is, you made the motion to pull all that out.
I did.
Okay? And I made the motion for insurance. They're mutually exclusive. You don't plan on one, you don't plan on one to spend money in the future. You pulled them, the majority board voted to pull them, I made the motion for the insurance, the majority of the board voted for it. And that's where it at, and we both got to live with it.
Now there's a motion to put them back. And we'll vote on it, and that'll be the end of the story.
Okay, you're right.
All right.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Oh. Oh, no, you need to amend. You need to amend.
I want to amend.
Yes, sir, amend.
I want to know why that seventy-five thousand dollars was put back in the budget, when every year I give back at least three to four thousand dollars out of my budget that I don't get. Next year, I start all over again. Is there any reason why I can't keep my money added on this year's? Can you answer that? Hmm? Can you answer that?
Every year is a different, every year is a different year. The whole, the whole budget, the whole, yeah, the whole budget is different. This year ends on the thirtieth of June. It starts a new budget. Y'all elected to put the money that you didn't use, it goes to fund balance, and your new budget starts the next year. If you decide to add on to it, that's a board decision, like last year, they added two thousand dollars to the board's budget. So that's up to the board to vote on it. That's a board decision, anytime. They can do it anytime. They can do it anytime.
I'd like to make that amendment. We add on what? We have left that I did on this year's?
For the board, man?
For the board amendment. Which is frugal and safe. Second? Amendment? Report, second. Any discussion?
Yeah, can I discuss that?
Yes, sir.
The reason I did this is because every year, a lot of board members are very frugal on what they spend on their money. That money is gone. Other board members spend the last penny and try to add some more to it. The thing is, I think the people that save their money should have it for next year in case they want to go to some, uh, some conference that's gonna cost more. The thing is, we've been good. I bet, I'd like to know how much money I give back every year since I've been here for 10 years. I don't think I've ever spent all my money and I probably never will.
Does anybody know how much money you give back? You have that question? Can I have your...
I think mine is about $3,000 or $4,000 out of five.
Go ahead. Ms. Williams?
I understand what you're saying, Richard, but I'm just as frugal as you are, if not more, I think. And I'm giving back, giving back even more than that. But, I'd be all for rolling over if you felt you had the need to use that money, but I don't need it. And if you roll my, I'm giving back, giving back 4,000 something. I think, actually, know mine. Out of 5,000, I'm giving back over 4,000 back. But, I'm gonna be just as frugal next year and I don't need $9,000 next year. So, I don't, I don't see the, the purpose of it unless you need that money next year because I know I don't need it and I'm okay with mine going back to fund balance because I didn't use it. I don't need it. It can be spent somewhere else.
I could thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And I, I don't recall having to put money on a board, board member's budget. I've been here five years. I don't ever remember putting money. So, I don't know whether it's legal to carry... That's...
That was in the board, but he's talking about extra.
Right, no. The extra, he said board members get extra, have asked for extra. I don't remember.
And you saw her money and she was all talking about money.
Well, that's, that's seven, eight, nine years ago. I wasn't here. I wouldn't have allowed it anyway. And I don't know whether it's legal to go ahead and carry your balance from...
Only if the board votes, the board votes for it.
Well, and that's what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay? That, that's all I have to say. Let's vote.
Okay, we're voting on Richard's amendment?
Yes, sir. We're carrying on the ballot now. Uh, votes for amendment fail. Okay, uh...
Now, I'm back to Mr. Derr.
Right. We're back to take theirs amendment. Are we ready to vote for the amendment? Okay? To put everything back, right, ma'am?
Yes, sir, put it back.
We have, uh, four, five, no, and three yeses. Amendment fail. Now, are we ready? Are there any more amendments? Any more amendments to the amendment?
I amend the amendment to amend.
Okay? So, now, we, we are voting, consider take action, possible action regarding approval of the amended proposed budget for the 2014, 2015 fiscal year. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay? We can vote, can vote. Okay, no, we say there, no, LaFoil, five yeses, two no's. The 2014, 2015 budget, now, official. Oh, official.
I would like to know how much school of all would like it?
Not 1.9, sir.
1.9? Where I go? Oh, yeah, that way.
Okay.
I'd like to say this. This is the first year I've been on the board that we haven't had a balanced budget. And I think we all ought to be shamed of ourselves for not having a balanced budget. There's things in this budget that could've come out, there's things that could've gone in. But, God, we need a balanced budget. We are going for a superintendent in a little while. He's gonna take one look at this board and say, "I ain't coming here." And this is gonna come back to haunt us all. Shame on us.
Okay.
Item, discussion, consideration of action, item D. Consider and take possible action regarding reorganization of the Judson ISD, board leadership, president, vice president, secretary, assistant secretary.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Members of the board, we are now open nominations for president of the Judson Independent School District.
Motion, too.
Oh, we need a...
No, no, there's no motion.
No, there's no motion on that.
There has to be a person nominated.
It's open.
Nominate.
Gilbert's name is up on the thing.
I, I make the motion that we keep the board leadership the way it is.
Second. Do we, discussion? Oh, no. Oh, we just... Oh, discussion. Mr. LaFoil.
I'm off the board. I'm off.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Ayer.
Mr. Flores, I'm not exactly sure how that works and we're in the middle of an open nomination. Can you do that?
Is that the same way we did it last year when you made that same motion?
Would you do that? Okay. Okay, then, I just wanna make sure I'm in order when I'm making amendment. So, I move to amend the motion to replace Ms. Williams with Mr. Masias as the vice president.
Second.
Oh, that's an amendment?
I can say second, sorry.
Oh, that's an amendment?
I amended what you wanted.
Oh, the amended motion. How could you do that? On the board, it's like, this is a totality. And this motion is, you know, the same. You can't amend something that's a total, you're right. How do you, how do you amend something that's a total? You can't do that.
The same way you amend the budget that's in totality. You can amend any motion.
It's a vote on everybody the same. You have to up and down.
No, you make them amend it before you pass.
No, this motion is, is a total board decision. You cannot amend something with a vote like that because then that null, that nullifies the first motion.
It just nullifies, it only changed one item.
You can't do that. It's, the motion is to keep everybody the same. You can't make the motion right after that.
We can go back and talk to the attorney.
But, that's a total motion. You can't amend something that's for every week.
Mr. President, I call for a session, attorney, counsel, fiction.
Okay, we're going to go under, hold on. This board will now adjourn to close session pursuant to the following section of Texas Open Meetings Act. Texas Government Code Section 551.071, private consultation with the board's attorney. We are ending the regular session at 8:20. From executive session, no vote was taken while in executive session was consultation with the attorney. We are back to regular session at 8:39.
Motion to amend.
Okay. Mo, motion to amend.
I make a motion to, for Mr. Flores to be president of Judson Board.
We have a first and, I mean, we have a motion and a second. Yes, ma'am?
I have an amendment, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am?
I move, I move to amend that we do the elections individually, one by one.
Second. Okay. We have an amendment and a second. Now, we have discussion now? Oh, Mr. LaFoil?
Like I said, we wouldn't be here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so, we're voting, we're amending to do the elections on a one-to-one. Is that correct, ma'am? Okay. Okay. That means the yes would be voting one. Okay. Okay. So, now, we're all, oh, we gotta do it individually.
You gotta withdraw, June, you have to withdraw or...
Oh, the amendment that you had made?
It's gone now. They canceled it now. Motion?
Okay, we have a, hold on. What was your motion?
It, it canceled, it doesn't matter because we're back to...
Order individually.
Dr. Mackey needs a call for motions for president.
Oh.
That's where we're at. Mr. President, members of the board?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to open nominations up for president of the Judson Independent School District.
Motion by Mr. Masias, motion to nominate Arnold to president.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any more?
Motion to nominate Mr. Masias.
Okay. You don't need a second on all these. Oh, you don't need a second? Anybody else?
Well...
Okay, so, we have, we have to vote now?
I make, um, yeah...
We have to make the nomination to close.
Oh.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations? He voted for Mr. Masias. Do you have, do we have any nominations, any, any other further nominations? If, if no further nominations, we open the floor to vote, uh, we put Mr. Salinas first and you have to vote for Mr. Salinas as president of the school board first. Voting's up right here.
For president.
Mr. Salinas, president. Mr. Salinas, Mr. Salinas is president of the Judson Independent School Board and turn this over to the president of the school board, open nominations up for the vice president.
Okay, thank you.
Nomination for vice president.
Okay, now, we're open for nomination for vice president.
I have a nomination.
Okay, sir.
Gilbert Flores for vice president.
We have Mr. Flores for vice president.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Masias.
Mr. Masias. Any other nominations? We're still open. Any other nominations?
That's something, no. I withdraw.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, we have Mr...
Mr. Flores.
Flores for vice president. We get the vote?
Ready?
Okay. Okay, now, we go, we go to...
That's funny, I mean...
Now, we go to Mr. Masias. Right? Nomination for Mr. Masias.
Put me off.
Okay? Okay, four yeses, three, two no's, one, oh, one...
No, we don't need that. No, he's not here. It's not a second.
All right, now, we have nomination for secretary.
I motion to nominate Ms. Dunader for secretary.
Okay, you nominate Ms. Dunader for secretary. Do we have any more nominations for secretary? Hearing none, we now shall vote.
Actually, you didn't have to vote. We're now with a nomination.
No, you do have to vote.
Yes.
Robert LaFoil says there's no one else that is actually...
Last time you did that, they said we had to vote.
Yeah, but let's go ahead and vote.
I voted.
Oh, okay. Four to two. Now, I open the floor for nominations for assistant secretary. Do we have any nomination? I nominate Mr. Salier for assistant secretary.
Excuse me?
Why do we even need that position?
Why do we need it?
It's in the policy and we need it.
It's in the policy, most school districts have it.
No, we need it. Because the other night, we didn't have an assistant secretary.
The vice president can do it, just taking the...
Well, we need to change our board policy because that's a position in our policy.
Well, we didn't have it all last year. And nobody, uh, they were too divided.
Y'all would not vote to do it. We had nominations for it last year.
Okay. Hold on, let's go ahead and vote. Uh, four yeses, two abstentions, Mr. Flores and Mr. Salier. So, Mr. Salier is the assistant secretary.
No, Mr. Derr. No, Mr. Salier, no.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Derr.
Well, back, Jackie, make sure and change the plate, please. And, okay, any other, any other thing?
Mr. President?
Yes?
On the nominations, I would request that the board consider changing the policy to align with other school districts that rotate the office and they go assistant secretary, secretary, vice president and president and give everyone on the board the opportunity to serve as president without politics being involved. And that's not a motion, that was just a suggestion for the board to look at for the, for the policy. Yes, sir.
Uh, we'll, we'll look into that. I don't know how they, to be honest with you, I, I don't... Gilbert, do you have any idea?
Uh, I've heard from boards, uh, I've seen both, I've seen it done that way and, well, I've heard it doesn't work.
Northside cases, it's a great...
I've, I've heard differently, but, but anyway, that's something.
Northeast does not do that. They do not.
Right. Well, that's something that can be looked into and then it can be brought back. Okay, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.
Do we put Mr. Flores in?